So our commitment to invest in those schools is there and remains steadfast and strong. Because we're not getting away from it, we had to create the opportunities to get the money to make those investments. And that's what we've done. The capital receipts from those sales have gone in to actually pay for those new schools. And it's the same principle that would apply to Hart Hill Road. Calder Kids you hear, not from me, but I've visited the site, I wonder how many others have, I've visited the facility, I wonder how many others have. Calder Kids, Beechley Stables and the Model Railway all need investment. I don't know whether you know this, I really don't, but this council and this city has had a 58% cut in its funnel, 340 million taken away. You can mumble at the back, mumble as much as you want, but that's a fact and we've got to replace or do something about it. So what we're doing with Hart Hill Road is selling the facilities, the fenced off facilities that the public can't access, and we're reinvesting that money in new facilities. New facilities for the people that need it. What could be more simple, more honest than that? Than actually ring fencing that money that provides new facilities for them fit for purpose? And you know what the plus side of that? The plus side of that is we'll get new homes built. That means we get more revenue in to try to protect the services that have been cut by a Tory administration in London. That's what's on offer here. And that's why that approach we will continue to make. And I remember the councillors in opposition in this chair in bed and some of the people at the back and some of the people in the city when we bought the Cunard Building.
Oh God.
Well, the Cunard Building, we paid 10 million and invested great. It's worth double that now. Double it, double it and we bring in 1.4 million pound in rent a year to spend on adding social care and other things. When we took it over, it was 20% occupied. When we took over, it was 20% occupied. It's now 80% occupied with the British Museum of Pop Moving there, a great tourist attraction for our city and a fantastic restaurant going up and downstairs. That's the innovative, creative way a socialist council works to provide money to invest back in our services. I make no mistake about it, let me tell you this, and I told our leader Jeremy Corbyn when he was here, I'm proud of leaving a socialist council that's built 5,400 homes, built 12 schools, provided money and support for people to get on the housing ladder, a million pounds into our credit union, 400,000 pounds, 400,000 pounds into support to most vulnerable people in this city and sell both space.
Excuse me, Mayor Anderson, could you just sit down a moment please? Could I ask members of the public, please to refrain from shouting out, as I explained at the beginning of the meeting, if we're going to conduct ourselves, you know, so that we can discuss and debate what goes on in the city, we need to hear what's going on. Please sit down, please sit down, like, sit down and please stop shouting out.
I didn't realise it, it was. But the fact of the matter is, Lord Mayor, we've said in this motion and we've said to the city, you know the challenges financially what we face and this initiative and what we're doing is absolutely the right thing to do because we're defending our people in this city and providing new facilities for our city that the people deserve and that's why this initiative is the right one to take.
We have noted that an amendment by councillor Kemp, can I ask you a second?
My lord, by the way, the mayor of Liverpool is quite right firstly to remind the council of the bigger picture here. We are of course, everyone in this council chamber and indeed I suspect in the city is aware of the severe difficulties that this council, like others, is facing. Even Oxfordshire Council apparently is facing great difficulties, but then the Prime Minister has complained to that council about the cuts that's being made to it. But the key question for this council, in fact there are two, is this. The first is that whether we should deal with a short term financial problem, short being three or four, five, I'm not saying it's this year or next, a medium term financial problem by building on land which by the very process of building on it will be lost to the people of Liverpool as green space for the next 200 years. And of course it will be. The second is whether or not building on our green spaces as is proposed in sites across the city will actually destroy the goose that lays the golden eggs. People want to live here because it's a green and pleasant land. Build on it and they won't want to come to our city. So let's, let's be, it's all specific and I can understand why the mayor didn't want to spend a lot of time on the specifics. The idea that the whole of this land isn't Calderstone's Park is farcical. Obviously, one organisation understands there's a Hart Hill Estate, but we recognise and have done for the last 20 years, an organisation called the Friends of Hart Hill and Calderstone's Park, not Hart Hill and Calderstone's Parks, Hart Hill and Calderstone's Parks. You go and ask a hundred people who live near that park, who use that park, what the park is, and they will say it starts at Hart Hill Road, goes up Appleton Road to Utry Road and back down another avenue, that's Amendment Avenue, that's what they will say. Because to their mind, that is all Calderstone's Park, some of which is public open space and some of which is community open space. I've only got 30 seconds left, so I can't expand all my arguments, but I would say this, my lord, if the mayor of Liverpool is absolutely confident that he's doing the right thing, why doesn't he leave his bunker, defended by the poor bloody infantry to my right, and come and debate the issues about Calderstone's Park in Liverpool 18? Any neutral venue, any neutral chair, I will be there. And while we're doing it, let's have another meeting about Walton Hall Park. Any neutral venue, any neutral chair, I will be there. And while we're doing that, let's go to Setton Park as well. Any neutral venue, any neutral chair, I will debate these issues with the people who live in those areas, with the people who use the park. Because if he thinks he's speaking for the people of Liverpool, he'll have another thing coming, my lord, may I bed to move.
I've got a moment of their speaker's face. First of all, call on councillor Lettsdale.
Thank you, Gordon O'Neil. I'd like to speak against the amendment. Two reasons, I think for two reasons. Firstly, because the Hart Hill Estate falls in my ward and churchward. And secondly, I think because this is the first opportunity I've had to address the council since I was elected in May 2014. I shan't be shouting at anybody even if I'm part of the poor bloody infantry. And I will be brief if there are a lot of people to speak. I mean, there is no need for this amendment at all and I believe it should be rejected and I'll explain why. The main motion is quite clear, it stands perfectly well on its own. It commends to us the vitally important work that's being done by organisations such as Calder Kids, whom I also visited, as Mayor Anderson mentioned, and also similarly the very important work that's done by Beechley Stables. The main motion does not require an amendment, the main motion provides exactly the clarity that's been asked of us by Ward residents and it states quite clearly, quite clearly, no part of Calderstone's Park is going to be built on. And I'll say that again because it says it quite clearly, words being what words say, no part of Calderstone's Park is going to be built on. I don't think there's any ambiguity about that, nor is any part being flogged off as the amendment says. So it's such a pity though, which is even entertaining, I think, using slang terms in amendments. So why is this amendment here at all? Well, I can actually think it's intended to justify the nonsense that gets promulgated around the ward by people who should know better, whose jaundiced publications, which is the best description of the colour that they are as well as the type of publication, has asked residents to closely focus on Hart Hill's innuendo and obfuscation. That's why this amendment has been brought, to butter all that up, not to mention the sarcastic snipings that are made against elected members in this chamber, some of which you've just heard earlier. One might even question the competence of this amendment because it actually refers to the Hart Hill Estate as being habitually used by the community. That is not true. We've just heard from Calder Kids that their part of the estate quite obviously is not habitually used by the community. It is not public green space. And that again is an unambiguous statement, it is not public green space. There is no added value in this amendment, it's irrelevant, it's a play to the crowds' thing, it's a slang thing, it's incompetent and I hope members to vote against the amendment.
Could I also advise the council, that happens councillor Lettsdale's made a speech, so congratulations. Could I ask councillor Mitchell, please?
Thank you, my lord. First of all, can I congratulate councillor Lettsdale for an excellent, nearly outstanding opening speech to the council. I love passion, I absolutely love it. So wasn't it great when you're here councillor Kemp, getting so passionate about green and open spaces? And I will never tire of remandering councillor Kemp in a passionate way about the green and open spaces he created in my end of the city. Stonebridge Cross and the Brute Estate, for my senior! And I declare to the very first line of his amendment, because I'm speaking to his amendment, my lord, may. Therefore, council believes that all public open space owned by the council and their ends with should be permanently kept for public use. That would mean the Brute Estate would still be the wasteland that he and his administration had left it instead of the inspirational piece of development that we delivered in a solid five years. And actually, very passionate about Stonebridge Cross where people died living in squalor after failed initiative, after failed initiative led by the previous administration, not only councillor Kemp and his wife, and of course the previous councillor was part of, but we have built a real park in that area and two weeks ago, we got five missions to build new social housing in that area. That green space afforded the council, that we all need to know. What absolute advent nonsense. The reality is, that the, the reality is, what really gets my goat, if you might have got it, is the perception that only people from the opposition are passionate about our green spaces and passionate to, you might have noticed, so we will fight to defend all green spaces, our parks in a joined up, really, really positive in a little way, but like that, because we have to make sure this city can protect them. Ignore this nonsense motion and let's move on to the real agenda.
Again, can I ask members of the public, and also members of the chamber really, to address the points that are made and try not to inflame people from both sides? Can I now call on councillor Lettsdale, please?
Thank you. Frank Paul Paisley also said that he want to be heard, speaks softly, so we might give that go. Another speeches we've had. Again, congratulations to councillor Lettsdale for an excellent speech standing for his constituents. It's good to hear that someone in churchward is actually doing that and trying to fight through some of the nonsense that's being distributed. It never ceases to amaze, does it, when councillor Kemp brings motions to council. There are many others on this side who appreciate an awful lot of what you've done, the fact that you are actually quite an excellent orator in many ways. And we forever think, oh, maybe he's getting better, maybe he's getting better, and then you just let it down by bringing nonsense like this forward. And you see, nonsense in the fact that the amendment actually wants to disagree with the motion itself. So if we were to accept it, we'd have a motion which disagreed with itself throughout, which is balmy in the extreme. We've only been on the council for many years, councillor Kemp, you'd have learnt how to write an amendment with all the pejorative statements that are going through it as well. It's absolutely ridiculous. The term green space gets abused in this city far too much. Anything that anyone wants to protect, they slap the name green space on it. It used to be, get it called the village green and see whether we can get away with it. The truth is, the truth is that in the face of terrible cuts to our finances and therefore, well, you can moan, but it's the truth. In the face of the terrible cuts to our finances and therefore the impacts on our services, we've been managed to move the city from being the worst in the list of cities on the indices of multiple deprivation to the fourth worst. Not a massive leap, but a leap that's been made under this administration in the last five years that has never been seen before in this city. You've got to take that into account when you're looking at how we make our decisions within this council. And we make those decisions fully aware that we want to protect the good things in the city, but also we don't want to coat the city in aspic. It's not going to be a memorial to times past, we're trying to build a future city, a city that people want to come to and they are, despite what you like to think councillor Kemp, people are coming to this city, we have a growing population. So in the face of that, the decisions that we make, it's been quite remarkable that we've been able to protect just as much as we have, that in reality, we've been able to increase green space in this city. We've been able to increase green space in this city and we've been able to protect the services that we've been able to protect. We're not helped by having back in the fat packet amendments put forward from councillors who simply should know better.
Councillor, questioner?
Thank you, my lord. Now, I wasn't going to speak on this motion, but it sticks in the craw to hear councillor Kemp talk about demanding the mayor to go and meet anytime, anywhere in Liverpool 18. You've been asked and challenged a number of times to come, anytime, anywhere, in a neutral venue in Norris Green, because there are residents there that would dearly like to speak to you from the disruption that you've caused to their lives from the last eight years. So you name the time, you name the date, we'll arrange the venue and we'll look forward to seeing you there answering for your decisions that you made that people are still suffering from today.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
I think it's just worth reminding council objecting to this amendment how permitted we are in this administration to green spaces. It's the Lord Mayor who commissioned an independently chaired panel looking at green spaces across the city, a panel which has continued to scrutinise how we do so. Every someone who's really genuinely committed to what we do about green spaces would offer such an opportunity to the people of Liverpool. Secondly, we have created a net amount of green spaces of all types of sizes, of all types of sizes and we will continue to do so where the opportunity prevents it. Now, speaking as someone who has been to Calderstone's Park, I've never been able to play football with my lad on Beechley Riding Stables, I've never been able to ride my bike through Calder Kids, I've never been able to do any of the public things, I've been doing Calderstone's Park in those areas because those areas are fenced off. Now, I have ridden on the train and I have a great time doing so and I'm really looking forward to riding on that same train, in fact on a better train and on a longer track when the model railway enthusiasts have their new venue. And that's why I support the overall motion and wish the amendment to fail because I think the amendment is going to prevent a really good thing from happening in the city. We can have a great opportunity to enjoy our parks and our green spaces even more and I am looking forward to riding on that little, that little chit chat train with my kids. And I really do hope that we do get to ride with hats and whistles as well. So that's why I think we should vote against this amendment and instead support the final motion.
Councillor, friendly man.
And the health issues of parks.
Yes, my lord. Again, I didn't intend to speak here, I thought the name Brute Estate and the fact that councillor Kemp had a match. And could I ask members of the public, please, could you please be quiet so that we can listen to what's being said, please?
I like, speaking before, I said I don't intend to get emotional, I'll just state facts. Councillor, councillor Kemp, sorry, councillor Kemp was in Charlie Pousen when we had a thing called Anfield Plus, where the council of Liverpool City, council and the football club spoke together for a long time, come up with proposals to decimate the population of Anfield and Blackfield on the development of the new club. He never went and spoke to anyone, neither did the council officers. The whole idea of this came out by somebody stupidly leaving a piece of paper lying around, which one of the residents got a copy of, photocopied and it all come out. The councillor was laughing, I mentioned his name because we all know who it is, don't we, Steve? And it wasn't either of us. But once that come out, we had passionate murder up in Anfield and Blackfield.
And you're having it in Walton now.
There was, there was a proposal to demolish 1,200 properties. No consultation with the people who live there.
No consultation in Walton.
No consultation at all. But we did give the people a chance to speak rather than we're being given here by people who shout out. We gave the people a chance to speak. And one of the first contributions that councillor Kemp made in that public meetings was to talk about compulsory birth disorders, which caused even more mayhem than the fact that the people's property is going to be pulled down. I was speaking about this last night and I was accused by some of the residents and once this all went ahead and we did get public consultation, the development has now taken place and we have got new properties, but while the Liberal Democrats were in control, that development was slowed right down. We had terrace after terrace of delicate property standard. It was only when this council, the Labour run administration took over and the housing market we knew of it, money was stopped by the government, that this council found a way out of this situation and actually paid for the demolition and entered into contracts with the developers to actively build new properties. And I was accused last night, despite all the good that's come out of the new property being built, of decimating the community. We never decimated the community. The people who took over the responsibility and decided to demolish 1,200 of the properties to facilitate Liverpool Left Sea's development, they're the ones that, that caused the demolition and that was the Liberal Democrats. And I find it absolutely abhorrent for people from, I have no problem with open space, I love it. I love open space. Come to the north end of Liverpool and tell us where all the big open parks are.
Walton, all the parks you're about to build up.
All the big open parks in the centre of the city. But I've said what we've done with developments that we've put in Anfield, we've put in green space, we haven't got back to back terrace houses where the kids can't play, we've put in play areas and we've developed the parks. A couple of weeks ago, there was actually the interruption of the skateboard park in Everton Park down at Bottom. Kids now have somewhere to go and something to play. That wouldn't be achieved if this council didn't have the interest of the community to develop the green space and the play areas for the whole of the city, not just one of theirs.
Can I ask Mayor Anderson, I'd like to think, my?
Lord Mayor, this is just simply a hijacking for legal. When it talks about councillor Kemp and it's talked about coming out of Bolton, it's like the councillors who represent Norris Green point out to him, I'm sure councillor Bradford, like many members, the very hat that four times the community asked him to go and rest in those places and four times he declined. The reason why, we all know, because we're longer than the two, he was sent out of the city by his leader and by the chief executive, get out of town with the mess that you've created. I'm not afraid of any debate, a sensible debate about anything that we do. It's, it's a bit rich that you sit there and you pontificate about what we're doing. What about Stanley Park? Was it not the Liberal Democrats who said it's built on Stanley Park? But the reality of this debate, of this debate, you've got man where playing fields, we don't know man where playing fields, but I could say no man where playing field, but it's you playing politics with it because that's what you do. And as far as I'm concerned, the Liberal Democrat lies, which they constantly churn out in that particular area, will be answered, will be answered. But fact is, we've got pretty even Beechley Stables, Beechley Stables, we wholeheartedly support the move and the continuing relationship. Lord Mayor, you really need to be quiet because the people are now listening, they're trying to say something, not his chairman's right.
Could I just again ask members of the public, the people in the lobby who keeps shouting out, if you're not going to be quiet, could you please leave the chamber? And if you do it again, I'll ask you to be escorted out.
Lord Mayor, I just pointed out, there's a letter from Beechley Stables, we support the move, we've got a great continuing relationship and we want to continue our relationship with Liverpool City Council and it will continue to support this charity, that's Beechley Stables, we pay the cost on Calder Kids and the Model Railway are really keen to develop and move the site. But you know what, you know, I promise you, it's the same, I hear somebody shout out about, about the, you know, Setton Road. You know, we spent 6.4 million pound refurbishing the roads around Setton Park, we've got the money, people need to understand that. We have got to try and develop our city and do things with no money. We're not selling a family silver as he tries to suggest by getting rid of green space. It's next to 198 is a green space, Calderstone's Park is protected and will be protected. The fact of the matter is, that piece of land is not available to the public and the organisations desperately want us to help them and that's what we're doing. Be proud of that and vote for it.
My understanding in the constitution and that the move in the amendment also has the right of reply. Okay, in that case, my lord, I'm half the opposition parties, I move a card vote on the amendment.
Oh, you are right.
This is a vote on the amendment. Seven members that need to stand up for a card vote.
On the main motion.
And on the amendment. We're having a card vote, just to be clear, on the.
We'll do it on the main board.
On the amendment, please. No, Mayor Anderson, I think they withdrawn that now and councillor Kemp has made, we will have, we will have a card vote on the main motion. Could I ask members on the amendment, all those in favour? Any abstentions? Any abstentions? The voting is six for, against seventy-one, two abstentions, the amendment is lost. Second amendment, councillor Crowe.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The mayor's, the mayor's motion really concerned me. It's a concern that the decision to be, to build on the Hart Hill Estate has obviously been made before the publication of the Green and Open Spaces Review, before we produced the draft local plan and with only very cursory consultation. And I think, even though we've heard from Calder Kids today and they're very positive about it, I think there are still significant questions regarding some of the institutions who are getting moved off. For example, this morning, the miniature railway were quoted in Liverpool Confidential calling it tragic to be moved off the land. So there's still big questions there. And just generally speaking, the continued encroachment onto much of this city's green space, it's a major worry to citizens all over, all over the city. And also just the general tone of the motion with the self-congratulation, that's a big concern. We're invited to welcome the initiative by the mayor and encourage him to seek new and imaginative ways to help sustain our city. And the problem with that is that we, along with a huge number of residents around the city, don't think that passing up green space and selling it off is particularly new or even primitive. So we're not calling on absolutely no piece of green space ever to be developed on, but high-quality green space, space which is designated under the Unitary Development Plan. That should be an absolute minimum of what gets protected in the city. But we're already seeing that that protection is getting ignored in other parts of the city and land designated as green spaces getting built on in Waver Tree and West Derby. There are many, many benefits of green space to, to people in this city. Many studies have shown that parks encourage healthy activity, that they act as the lungs of the city and they're good for mental health. So maintaining our parks makes a vital contribution to public health. And that's always more important in a city like Liverpool, which has got high rates of respiratory and heart disease. One of the great pullbacks of the city is the great parks and the green spaces. They bring people into the city and they're certainly one of the things that make people stay here permanently. If we don't protect them, Liverpool becomes a less attractive place to live. So if we want to sustain the city, we need to, we need to protect our parks, not just building them. So it's time to show a bit of humility, admit you've got it wrong and you're going down the right track and wrong track on green space. Start listening to people who want proper protection for cherished green space in this city.
The last is the amendment secondly. Okay. Now, technically, actually, we're, we're out of time for this particular motion. So could I ask members who wish to speak to be really concise and also keep their comments to the geographical area that we're talking about, rather than Botton Hall Park or anywhere else? Thank you.
Lord Mayor, just a, a point of information really for me. You mentioned two pieces of land that were sold in West Derby and Waver Tree. Did you name them?
Well, the, the Waver Tree part is the part of Gangesborough Road. And that was a piece of green space that had good biodiversity and a good bit of ecosystem. The West Derby part is a bit of park-style lane, the area of green space of park-style lane.
Look the way you, you talk, that's Brownfield site, both of those sites, Brownfield sites. Those are identified in the Unitary Development Plan as green space.
Can we just get some clarification? Are the sites Brownfield sites? Can we, can we move? It's been suggested that the question that we put to the main motion, is that agreed? I understand there's going to be a card vote now. All those against? Any abstentions? The voting was for the amendment eight, against seventy-one, no abstentions, the amendment is lost. Back to this substantive voting. Could you be, please be quiet now while we take the card vote, please?
Councillor Aspinall? Councillor Barks? Councillor Barrington? Councillor Beaumont? Councillor Bennett? Councillor Brandt? Councillor Branagh? Councillor Brown? Councillor Kane? Councillor Calvert? Councillor Castles? Councillor Clark? Councillor Connor? Councillor Corbett? Councillor Corey? Councillor Croft? Councillor Crowe? Councillor Dave Comyns? Councillor Martin Comyns? Councillor Dean? Councillor Adele Darling? Councillor Brian Darling? Councillor Boxley? Councillor Frankel? Councillor Francis? Councillor Roy Glutton? Councillor Rosler? Councillor Blair? Councillor Hamrati? Councillor Hanson? Councillor Harrison? Councillor Heron? Councillor Harrow again, be quiet here. Thank you. Councillor Higginson, here. Councillor Hirschfield? Councillor Hunt? Councillor Hughes? Councillor Hurley? Councillor Jennings? Councillor Jolly? Councillor Jones? Councillor Erica Kent? Councillor Richard Kent? Councillor Kennedy? Councillor Kent? Councillor King? Councillor Knight? Councillor Barry Kushner? Councillor Joanne Kushner? Councillor McCallum? Councillor McIntosh? Councillor McLeary? Councillor Vanna? Councillor Mitchell? Councillor Ball? Councillor Morrison? Councillor Mumbick? Councillor Murray? Councillor Nicholas? Councillor Lewis? Councillor Norris? Councillor Anoben? Councillor Rachel O'Beir? Councillor Ball? Councillor Owen? Councillor Friendergest? Councillor Perez? Councillor Kedee? Councillor Ufford? Councillor Rainey? Councillor Rasmussen? Councillor Roberts? Councillor Robertson Collins? Councillor Robinson? Councillor Rotheridge? Councillor Simon? Councillor Small? Councillor Sforro? Councillor Strickland? Councillor Sullivan? Councillor Sung? Councillor Jack Taylor? Councillor Jackie Taylor? Councillor Summers? Councillor Walker? Councillor Walson? Councillor Winston? Councillor Wolfson? Councillor Wood? Councillor Woodhouse? Good night. Thank you.
The voting is seventy-two for, six against, with two abstentions, the motion's carried. But we now move on to motion eleven. Houses in multiple occupation by councillors Calvert-Sung and Liam Robinson. And I also advise the council that this will be councillor Calvert-Sung's main speaker.
Lord Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to make my first speech to this chamber. It is an honour to be able to represent the residents of Chilbrook and Stoneley Croft. I have lived in my community in Chilbrook for more than thirty years. During that time, I was seeing with my own eyes how the neighbourhood has changed. It used to be a thriving district centre with a great range of bustling shops that were well supported by the community. A strong sense of curiosity has always been the backbone of the area. Neighbor knew neighbor and people lived in the area their entire lives. And it used to be a very prosperous place. In Union Park off West Derby Road, at Stoneley Croft and in Braxhill Park, large Victorian mansions and terraces were built to house our city's growing prosperous classes. And Lord Mayor, it is those large Victorian houses that are the recalls of so many of Chilbrook and Stoneley Crofts. Few families these days needed eight bedrooms, then a detached mansion. And so, for understandable reasons, very many of these large houses have been converted into smaller, more manageable sizes. But sadly, far too often, the quality of these conversions is very poor. They are not converted into nice apartments or flats. They are converted into low-quality bedsits or letting rooms, often with shared kitchen and bathroom facilities. It is a fact that the levels of alcohol and drug misuse among tenants is high. I hear it every day from my constituents. The reason to introduce a street drinking ban in my ward is a testament to these problems. And of course, Lord Mayor, everyone deserves somewhere to live. And that's why Mayor Anderson's pledge before his election to build 5,000 new homes, a target that is set to be massively exceeded. And of course, Lord Mayor, huge Victorian mansions need to be put back into use because people need homes. But good quality flats, one or two-bedroom flats, not poor quality bedsits with a shared kitchen and a shared toilet, with ten or even fifteen residents sharing the same facilities. The street drink-